All right, six o'clock.
I'd like to call the Madison City Council September twenty-sixth meeting to order, please. And tonight we have Pastor Lincoln from Madison Baptist Church here lead us in the prayer.
Heavenly Father, we come to you tonight, Lord. We just thank you for this opportunity that we have to gather here. Lord, I just pray that you put a hedge of protection around our city. Lord, I just pray for our local police as well as with the fire department. And Lord, tonight, Lord, I just pray that you be with our officials. For they be with Mayor Finley as well as the other council. Lord, I pray that you give them wisdom and discernment for the decisions to be made. Lord, I pray for those that are here in attendance, Lord, that we represent ourselves in the proper manner. Lord, I just pray that everything that we do with what we say, what we think, and the words that we speak, Lord, I just pray that it brings honor and glory to you. Just be with our city during this time. Give us the wisdom that we need from above. In the precious name of Jesus Christ, we pray. Amen.
Amen.
Thank you. Would you join me in the prayers? I pray to the heavens. This is a cry in the United States of America. A true republic, a righteous land, one nation, and one God, and a people that has never been in suchness for all. Can I get the roll call, please?
Mayor Finley? Councilmember Robleski?
Here.
Councilmember Spears?
Here.
Councilmember Powell?
Here.
Councilmember Shaw?
Here.
Councilmember Bartlett?
Here.
Councilmember Denzine?
Here.
Councilmember Seifert?
Here.
And we have a quorum, so we'll move forward. Looks like we have several additions. Do you want to talk through those?
Mr. President, as far as, we had two resolutions that were added that were not listed on the agenda and published. But what we have here is a couple of agreements that need to be passed before the end of fiscal year. The first one that I would address is one that was submitted by the Police Department. This would be a memorandum of understanding between the Police Department and with Aleah. This is an agreement that basically expires on the thirtieth. So we're just trying to renew the same agreement that we've had as far as drug task force. So that's what's going on with Resolution Number twenty-two-two-sixty-three. And we also have another resolution to approve another agreement. This is for the authorization of school, I'm sorry, of school crossing guards. Last time around, we authorized or we submitted an agreement for a memorandum of understanding over SROs. And at that time, we probably should have went ahead and addressed the crossing guards as well. But what we have is just a separate agreement between the Board of Education and the city for that. So these are both agreements that expire on the thirtieth with the fiscal year. And that's why we did not add them to the next agenda. But I believe there were two other matters that were being updated with the agenda that I wasn't as familiar with. I believe we were missing resolution numbers on a couple of items.
Yes, we, item four F, we're going to add Resolution twenty-two-two-sixty-two R for court declaring a printer and drums as surplus. We're going to put those on good deals. And under council presentation, Councilmember Robleski, Resolution two-zero-two-two-two-four-eight. And that's for the holidays observed for FY twenty-twenty-four.
Both those are printed, though.
Yes. We also need to add under board and committee appointments, the water board, or also known as Madison Utilities. There are two places. I guess it's place one and place four.
Any other changes or additions? It's not, we'll move forward with those changes. Actually, I need approval amendments dated September twelfth. Is it to approve?
Second.
Motion to second. Is there any discussion? If not, can we get the vote, please?
Councilmember Powell?
Aye.
Councilmember Spears?
Aye.
Councilmember Robleski?
Aye.
Council President Shaw?
Aye.
Councilmember Bartlett?
Aye.
Councilmember Denzine?
Aye.
Councilmember Seifert?
Aye.
Motion passes. Next, we need some minutes from September seventh. Is it approved?
Second.
Motion to second. Is there any discussion? If not, can we get the vote, please?
Councilmember Powell?
Aye.
Councilmember Spears?
Aye.
Council President Shaw?
Aye.
Councilmember Robleski?
Aye.
Councilmember Bartlett?
Aye.
Councilmember Denzine?
Aye.
Councilmember Seifert?
Aye.
Motion passes. Next, the presentation awards, and we have McDabb.
Thank you so much, council, for letting me present to you tonight. I represent McDabb. We are the Madison City Disability Advocacy Board. My name is Janessa Cross Y. I am the current chairperson. Just going to do a brief little rundown for those people that are listening and watching of what we do. We advocate for individuals with special needs in our community. We work with the city to bring programs and events that are inclusive and so that all can participate. We are very active with Parks and Rec. Corey is wonderful over there. We do lots of collaboration with him. We do events like the Extravaganza, the Trunk Retreat. We are working to bring swim lessons. We do, working on transferring or making waves from the Y to Dublin. We've purchased platforms so that individuals with wheelchairs have better access to the pools. We worked with Mary Beth to discuss the playground at Toyota Stadium and got to, were privileged to just be part of collaborating with that. She was very helpful in us getting to purchase adult changing tables for those restrooms. And that is a huge, huge, huge difference in the lives of our individuals with special needs. Let's see, Steve Smith and Corey have been wonderful about already discussing plans for three springs. And let me tell you, they are, they're even pushing me. They're like, no, we can do more. We can do this. I'm like, they're like, think big. I'm like, eh. It has been amazing to have that kind of support. Kids Kingdom has been a gem of Madison for years. Unfortunately, it, like all the rest of us, has succumbed to wear and tear and is in need of being replaced. And we are so thankful that the city is working so hard to make the new playground, take this opportunity when we need to replace the playground, to do it in the most inclusive way that we can. So McDabb is thrilled to present a check to Madison Visionary Partners for twenty thousand dollars. We would like to earmark that for the restrooms. We, as a board, are particularly sensitive to the restroom needs of our individuals. And those do go above and beyond what others may need. But we want a playground and a restroom that serves all levels of abilities and disabilities. Thank you to Matt McClellan for being our board representative and being so active with all these committees. I hesitate to even start to mention who all is involved in the Kids Kingdom project because it is such a huge project. But thank you to the city for backing that and supporting that. And we are thrilled to be just a small part of that. And I was hoping the mayor would be here tonight for a picture. But Maura has been our liaison for years and years, and now I'm blanking on how many years. And Karen is our new liaison. And would you all be willing to take a picture with me and this big check?
That's all we have for our presentation awards. Next to public comments, we have one or two people signed up. Ms. Marjorie Daley, would you, if, by the comment?
The new lights in our neighborhood. And I live in an older neighborhood, just across there. And we only have streetlights on one side in every, like, five to six houses. And we have, you know, a hundred and fifty-foot frontages. So you're talking like a thousand feet in between these lights. And I have one at four ninety-eight. And then we have a teak one at Willard and Marion. It's pitch black. You can't see anything. I mean, I would say they go maybe thirty, forty feet, but it only lights one side. And it's going to cause, you know, possible, I mean, people can't walk. We have a lot of people that walk, especially us older people who like to walk a little later in the evening and ride bikes and such. And it's gonna, I think it could be hazardous. So I think maybe we need to reevaluate. I'm sure there will work in neighborhoods that have small frontages, cul-de-sacs and such like that. But I think we have to reevaluate where there's not streetlights on both sides. Because it looks like they're made for, you know, only a certain amount of.
That's right.
And I believe they're twenty-five watts, but I'm not sure. I called Public Works and they said somebody complained about the fifty watt, that it was too bright. But I don't think it's about the wattage. I think it's about the radius that the light shines, actually. It looks like a car is out front. That's what it looks like. It doesn't look like the street light. So I just wanted to let you guys know. I think maybe they didn't look at the older neighborhoods or what have you when they evaluated putting that type of light in.
Some of those remote control, didn't they say there's, some of them were like.
Right.
Remote control that they could.
Right. And I had that happen. I had the neighborhood that did not want the fifty watts, and they were able to adjust it. So have you sent an email to the mayor's office on that? Well, I called the mayor's office, left a message. I called Public Works. Yeah, it wouldn't be them. Aleah Banks, she said she would contact the contractor. Okay.
Just look into that.
Yeah. Okay, thank you. That's easy.
Ma'am.
Yeah, there are a lot of citizens that have these same complaints. That the lighting just isn't what it used to be. And so we are evaluating that.
Does anyone else like to address council or not? If not, close the public comments and move to consent agenda and finance committee report.
Okay, finance committee met last week. We reviewed bills to be paid and the consent agenda items. And I'm going to have more to say about the finance committee meeting with regard to the budget later in my line item. But with that, I'd like to move to approve items on the consent agenda.
Second, I would like to point out the check from Madison County Commission for the Fire Department in the amount of eleven thousand dollars.
Motion to second. Is there any other discussion? If not, can we get the vote, please?
Councilmember Bartlett?
Aye.
Councilmember Powell?
Aye.
Council President Shaw?
Aye.
Councilmember Robleski?
Aye.
Councilmember Spears?
Aye.
Councilmember Denzine?
Aye.
Councilmember Seifert?
Aye.
And motion passes. Next is presentation of reports, and the mayor's out tonight. So we'll start with Mara at District One.
Yes, sir. The first item I have for you is Resolution twenty-two-two-two-fourty-eight-r. And this is the calendar observation for the city of Madison for the year twenty-twenty-four. It includes Juneteenth, like we've included last year and this year, and also a floating holiday that the employee can take at their discretion. And with that, I ask for move, and with that, I move to approve.
Second.
Motion in a couple of seconds. Is there any other discussion? If not, can we get the vote, please?
Councilmember Robleski?
Aye.
Councilmember Powell?
Aye.
Council President Shaw?
Aye.
Councilmember Spears?
Aye.
Councilmember Bartlett?
Aye.
Councilmember Denzine?
Aye.
Councilmember Seifert?
Aye.
Motion passes.
Thank you. And then I just have a couple of items. I attended the Madison Public Library Board Meeting. And my last McDabb meeting, I want to thank Councilmember Denzine for taking over that library board meeting. And McDabb met essentially at the same time, and it was hard to get to both. So I very much appreciate her stepping in to that wonderful role. It's a fabulous organization that has served so many in the city of Madison. On October eleventh, we're going to be having an author event at the Madison Library. My friend Jessica Pino is going to present her book Haunted North Alabama. So that will get us in the mood for Halloween. And she's a very charismatic lady and has a lot of wonderful stories. So please mark your calendar for October eleventh at our Madison Library. And that's all I have.
All right, addition number two.
I just want to remind everybody, that I'm sure Karen will also remind everybody, the Madison Street Festival is Saturday. If you have never been to a Madison Street Festival, you are missing out. It is one of the premier events in the state. And it is my favorite event, not only because I get to see all of the people that I have not seen forever and ever, but because it is just a great day of family fun. We have, starts off with the parade, followed by all kinds of activities downtown, food trucks. Wonderful, wonderful. And so I just wanted to remind y'all of that.
Number three.
Well, I would second what Connie said about the Street Fest. I am excited about the parade being downtown. It's been a couple of years. So I'd like to thank both of the chiefs for getting that together and making that happen. I think that parade belongs downtown, particularly at that time. So I look forward to that. And just, you know, like to thank Public Works for trying to stay on top of stuff as, you know, we get trash picked up and that kind of thing. And that's all I have.
Number five.
First, I've got Budget Resolution Number twenty-two-two-two-eleven-r approving the fiscal year twenty-twenty-three budget. A couple of highlights. First, the budget was introduced at our last council meeting on September twelfth. After the budget was introduced and presented by the mayor, the finance committee met last week on September twentieth. We discussed all of the recommendations. Councilmember Robleski and Denzine also attended, along with all members of the finance committee meeting members and also the department heads. As we discussed each of the recommendations, there was one change that came out of the finance committee meeting. And that was with regard to outside appropriation for the enrichment center. Last year, the enrichment center received ten thousand dollars. This year, they had requested twenty-five thousand. The mayor had recommended fifteen in his presentation at our last council meeting. After discussion, the finance committee agreed to increase that amount to twenty thousand. That is the only change in the spreadsheet that you first received at the budget presentation on the twelfth. All other recommendations of the mayor were accepted after some questions and some back and forth. Wanted to highlight that in this year's budget, or next year's budget, we're recommending a step increase for the sixth straight year for our employees, a three percent COLA. There's no increase to employee insurance payments for the sixth straight year. We are adding fourteen additional employees, four for police, six for recreation, a facility manager, a CIP project manager, a bid purchase manager, and someone for communications. The only question that I received as finance chair from the public had to do with whether we had designated our ARPA funds for any purpose yet. We have not. We have only recently received this month the second round of our ARPA funding. And I anticipate that we will have a discussion at an upcoming finance committee meeting about how we will spend those funds. That's a little over five million dollars. So that's the only question I received. I don't know if any other members of the finance committee received any other questions. And with that, I'd like to present Resolution Number twenty-two-two-two-eleven-r for approval.
Second.
Motion to second. Is there any discussion?
Yeah, there is something I would like to say. As I went through the numbers. As I went through the numbers, in the, it has all of the number of employees from 19, from 2019 until current. And if you look through it, there are many departments that really haven't added maybe one person over that timeframe. And I just want to commend all of the employees because even as we've grown, they continue to work so hard and to fill in and continue to provide the services for the city, even though the departments really haven't grown that significantly over the years. And I just want to commend them for their hard job, especially when there are so many open vacancies too, just because they can't hire people. And everyone just steps in. And I just really appreciate all that the employees do for us. And I just wanted to make that comment. Thank you.
And I just wanted to add my thanks to the chair of the finance committee, Councilmember Bartlett, and the finance committee, who's Connie Spears and Teddy Powell, for the work they did and for the presentation that we had last week where we were able to ask questions and get more information. I really appreciate that opportunity and also that the department heads were there to answer questions on engineering. So thank you for that extra meeting. I really appreciate it.
Any other discussion? Not, can we get the vote please?
Councilmember Bartlett?
Aye.
Councilmember Spears?
Aye.
Council President Shaw?
Aye.
Councilmember Roblesky?
Aye.
Councilmember Powell?
Aye.
Councilmember Denzine?
Aye.
Councilmember Seifert?
Aye.
And motion passes.
Oh, that's it.
Okay. District Number Six. Oh, wait. District Number Six.
All right. Last week I was able to attend McDab. It was my first time there. It is a wonderful organization and they work so hard to provide for the needs of the, those that have special needs. And they work so hard to do it. I love the devotion that they have in their group. I appreciate being part of them now. Also, I went to the Wellstone Crisis Center, ribbon cutting. It is amazing what they have accomplished over there. Now they are able to have in bed places for people to go that are in crisis. And you can just walk up to the door. Or if there's a need, if they come through with the police, that's available too. But it is no facility up in northern Alabama that can treat so many people who have the mental needs. And whether, whether it's based on drugs or if it's based on trauma that you've had in your life, the fact that we have this in our area is just wonderful. And I totally support everything that Wellstone does. And I'm glad that we do have it. Also, the advisory committee for the police and citizens, they are having their meeting. They are having ARC. ARC is another, another service that we have within our community that provides for the most vulnerable populations among us. It also helps the developmentally disabled, the children with disabilities in early childhood development. It includes pre-K, autism, pre-K medical screening. Sure, they do a lot of things. So that's what they're going to be doing in their meeting. So if you have a chance to attend, I think it'll be another wonderful opportunity to learn more of what's available and services in our area. I've shared with y'all my journey with my husband and his cancer. Today, we met with a doctor and the cancer is back again. He's got another new tumor and it's in various other places. So while it wasn't the good news that we had hoped because he had had the surgery and we hoped that that would have going to take care of things, it didn't. But the outpouring of love from this community continues. I felt with so many people today, as I was letting people know. This community is a community, a family. We are a community that does come together. And I know sometimes it looks like there's a lot of people that are at odds. And I don't, I don't see that in our community. I see people that have disagreements. I see people that would like to do things differently. But I think overall, as a community, we do a wonderful job of being a family. And I appreciate everyone who has been very supportive during this time. And I guess continuing forward, we're going to have more issues. And it's a really good thing that Maura, excuse me, the county does such a good thing about talking to Madison Street Festival. It is happening this weekend. It is exciting. I'm sorry, it's just really hard to get too excited about anything right now. I'm really sorry, but thank you.
District Number Seven.
I don't have any more business.
All right. We've got two places on the waterboard.
Yes, I'd like to, first of all, I'd like to thank all of the people who applied because we did have several applications. And after discussing with, with Council President Shaw and the mayor, we decided that we felt like we would like to nominate for place one, Carrie Straub, and for place four, Larry Miles.
Is there any other nominations for place one? If not, then we'll place Carrie on there through Acclamation. And then for four, you said what? Larry Miles?
Larry Miles.
Is there any other nomination for place four? If not, then we'll place Larry on there for three, Acclamation. We have public hearings next. And we have three.
Yes, good evening. Matt Davidson with the Planning and Economic Development Division. I'm here on behalf of Mary Bass. She wasn't able to make it tonight. So I will present the next three items. Item 7A is regarding a proposed ordinance, number 2022-217, for zoning certain property owned by Home Max Realty LLC, located at 130 Forest Drive, west of Nance Road, to R1A Low Density Residential District. Upon annexation, the first reading for this item was on August 8th, 2022. And this item was also continued at the previous city council meeting due to some additional notifications that needed to go out. This request is related to the annexation of one lot in the Rainbow subdivision. The applicant is requesting R1A zoning for the subject property. The lot is approximately 20,000 square feet and contains a single-family dwelling constructed in 1970. It's property adhering to the Rainbow Elementary School site and is surrounded by properties that are within the city of Madison. The property is consistent with R1A zoning requirements and both staff and the planning commission recommend approval. Thank you.
Open the public hearing. Anyone like to address counsel? If not, we'll close the public hearing and ask for a motion.
Move to approve.
Second. Motion to second. Is there any discussion? If not, can we get the vote please?
Councilmember Spears?
Aye.
Councilmember Powell?
Aye.
Council President Shaw?
Aye.
Councilmember Roblesky?
Aye.
Councilmember Bartlett?
Aye.
Councilmember Denzine?
Aye.
Councilmember Seifert?
Aye.
Motion passes.
Yes, item 7D on your agenda is regarding a proposed ordinance, number 2022-215, rezoning certain property owned by M. Ann Clift and Charlotte Campbell, located on both sides of Landers Road, south of Brown's Ferry Road, from R2 Medium Density Residential District to B2 Community Business District. The first reading for this item was on August 8th, 2022. And this item was also continued at the previous city council meeting due to some additional notifications that needed to go out. The applicant is requesting a zoning map amendment to rezone 6.79 acres from R2 Medium Density Residential to B2 Community Business District. Property fronts on Brown's Ferry Road, across from the Midtown Madison Shopping Center where the Kroger is, and is split by Landers Road. Property is bordered by D2 Commercial Property to the north, Silo Primitive Baptist Church to the east, and Meadow View subdivision to the west, which are all zoned R2. Property south of the project is also zoned R2 and is currently undeveloped. The planning commission heard this request in July and there were two people that provided public comments regarding potential traffic issues and businesses that would be permitted if the property was to be rezoned to B2. The planning commission did vote to recommend approval of the request and staff also recommends approval. Thank you.
I'm going to recuse myself from this vote. So with that, I'd like to open the public hearing. Anyone liking to address counsel on this? All right, I'll close the public hearing and ask for a motion.
Move to approve.
Second.
Any discussion? Can I get the vote please?
Councilmember, I'm sorry, Councilmember Roblesky?
Aye.
Councilmember Powell?
Aye.
Council President Shaw?
Councilmember Spears? Aye.
Councilmember Bartlett?
Aye.
Councilmember Denzine?
Aye.
Councilmember Seifert?
Aye. Motion passes.
Let me come back up. Last public hearing we have is a weed lean assessment.
Mr. President, what we have here is a resolution for assessing weed lean. I've provided, if there are some match cords, I guess, to touch on as far as this particular resolution. What we've got is being assessed on a property that's located at the address of 101 Woodlong Circle. And the amount to be assessed is $498.88. I understand that the letters have been sent out. Everything has, all notice has been sent out to the owners and we are now ready for a public hearing on the matter.
I'd like to open the public hearing. Anyone like to address counsel? If not, we'll close the public hearing. Ask for a motion.
Motion.
Second.
Motion to second. Is there any, is there any discussion? If not, last for the vote please.
Councilmember Powell?
Aye.
Councilmember Spears?
Aye.
Council President Shaw?
Aye.
Councilmember Roblesky?
Aye.
Councilmember Bartlett?
Aye.
Councilmember Denzine?
Aye.
Councilmember Seifert?
Aye.
Motion passes. Next is department reports and start with planning.
Yes, sir. Item 8B is regarding a proposed ordinance, number 2022-213, assending to the annexation of certain property owned by Home Max Realty LLC, located at 130 Forest Drive. This ordinance is related to item 7A. Subject property is consistent with the surrounding R1A zoning and both staff and planning commission recommend approval.
Move to approve.
Second. Motion to second. Agreed. Any discussion? If not, can we get the vote please?
Councilmember Seifert?
Aye.
Councilmember Powell?
Aye.
Council President Shaw?
Aye.
Councilmember Roblesky?
Aye.
Councilmember Spears?
Aye.
Councilmember Bartlett?
Aye.
Councilmember Denzine?
Aye.
Motion passes. Recreation.
Resolution 2022-249-R, Authorization of an Agreement with the Madison Street Festival for the Mars Bus Use.
Move to approve. Aye.
Motion to second. Is there any discussion? If not, can we get the vote please?
Councilmember Roblesky?
Aye.
Councilmember Spears?
Aye.
Council President Shaw?
Aye.
Councilmember Powell?
Aye.
Councilmember Bartlett?
Aye.
Councilmember Denzine?
Aye.
Councilmember Seifert?
Aye. Motion passes.
Resolution Number 2022-250-R, Authorization of Professional Services Agreement with Cory Engineering for Staking of Kids Kingdom Playground Renovation.
Move to approve. Second.
Motion to second. Is there any discussion?
I just wanted to ask, how are we doing? Have we started the demolition on that?
No, ma'am. We have started removing trees.
Okay.
We have a tree contractor coming in tomorrow, Wednesday and Thursday, to remove a few more trees and then we'll be able to start.
Very good. And it's formally closed with signs up for everyone.
Definitely.
Excellent. Thank you, Kelly.
Can we get the vote please?
Councilmember Roblesky?
Aye.
Councilmember Spears?
Aye.
Council President Shaw?
Aye.
Councilmember Powell?
Aye.
Councilmember Bartlett?
Aye.
Councilmember Denzine?
Aye.
Councilmember Seifert?
Aye. Motion passes.
Resolution Number 2022-259-R, Approval of Agreement with Huntsville, Alabama for Mars Dispatch and Funding.
Move to approve. Second.
Motion to second. Is there any discussion? If not, can we get the vote please?
Councilmember Powell?
Aye.
Councilmember Spears?
Aye.
Council President Shaw?
Aye.
Councilmember Roblesky?
Aye.
Councilmember Bartlett?
Aye.
Councilmember Denzine?
Aye.
Councilmember Seifert?
Aye.
Motion passes.
Hey, Kelly, I got a question for you. I meant to ask it on number one. No big deal, but can you talk a little more about what we're doing with the Mars vans and the street festival? It sounds like it's a benefit and a feature that the citizens can take advantage of.
Yes, we're going to provide two buses to help with the street festival. In the transportation, we have two drivers that will work on Saturday to help with the handicap. We're going to use our Mars handicap buses. One will be at location and the other will be at the other location just constantly.
And what will those locations be?
Cross Point and the stadium.
Okay. Thank you.
Mm-hmm.
Next is police.
This is for the MOU with Alea. Again, this is just reapproving it for fiscal year 2023. We're part of the statewide drug task force as well as part of the North Alabama Drug Area Task Force. Specifically with Alea, that allows us to conduct investigations anywhere in the state of things that we find here in our area that branch out.
Move to approve.
Second.
So that's for, for Resolution 2022-263-R is what.
Mm-hmm.
All right. Motion to second. Is there any discussion? If not, can we get the vote please?
Councilmember Roblesky?
Aye.
Councilmember Powell?
Aye.
Council President Shaw?
Aye.
Councilmember Spears?
Aye.
Councilmember Bartlett?
Aye.
Councilmember Denzine?
Aye.
Councilmember Seifert?
Aye. Motion passes.
Thank you, Chief.
This will be our second walk-in of the evening. This is the resolution that I referenced earlier about the crossing guards and the agreement with the Board of Education. This is Resolution 2022-261. Essentially, this is just the renewal for the new fiscal year as far as what we've been doing for several years as far as providing the funding for those crossing guards. So that is a resolution that, September 30th is the last day and that's the reason that we're walking it.
Move to approve.
Second. Motion to second. Any discussion?
I have a question. I see that we've executed our copy, but the school system hasn't. But it has to be done on the 30th. How are you getting it in front of them?
We're going to rush it through and we're going to have to unfortunately get it on their agenda so that they can get the approval as well. But a bit of oversight, we did the SRO agreement, then we realized that it wasn't addressed in both Madison Crossing Guard and SRO. So we're working to get that pushed through as quickly as we can for the next fiscal year. But it is a tight window, unfortunately.
They have an meeting Thursday?
I have not been informed whether or not this would make it on Thursday or not, but we're trying to get it very first setting.
Good.
All right, can we get the vote please?
Councilmember Roblesky?
Aye.
Councilmember Powell?
Aye.
Council President Shaw?
Aye.
Councilmember Spears?
Aye.